All right, I will call. The public hearing. For the public hearing on Verizon cable licensing. With the Wyndham BOS and the Hamilton BOS and many other interested parties. Statement to read. First, I'll call the order, we'll take a roll call for who's here. So. Myself, Sean Farrell is here. Who else we have from the Hamilton Board of Selectmen here? If you if you're here, you can unmute yourself and and. Say you're here, I know Rosie's here. Always kind of awkward on these things. Rosie, I see you're here. Can you say that you're present? Okay, thank you, Rosie. I could barely hear you, but I heard you.
I'm strong with the microphone.
And let's see, is that all we have for us?
Looks like all you got from the Hamilton Board.
Okay, and then is Jack on?
Anthony, do you know about Jack or?
I think JW might be Jack. Jack, is that you?
We can hardly hear you.
Yeah, so Gary Cheeseman's on, Gary?
Yeah, I'm on. How are you doing?
Oh, he is, okay. All right, John's on.
So we got John, we got the quorum on Wyndham's side.
Do you, John, or do you and or? George, want to call the meeting in order then, or do you think JW is Jack?
Um, I don't know.
You unmute JW for me?
Well, John, this is Gary. Why don't you just go ahead and call the one to order?
All right, I'd like to bring the Wyndham Board of Selectmen to order for the meeting of. September twenty first at six o'clock, six oh four on September twenty first.
And Selectman Cheeseman on for the second for the quorum.
Right. And it's always kind of awkward getting these people in these meetings here, but I'll just start with a brief statement here. And then we can go ahead and get started on the hearing. So, you know, good evening, everybody. I appreciate this opportunity to address the hearing and speak some of the anticipated needs of the HW Cam. Hamilton Wyndham Community Access Cable Station has been a wonderful resource for the residents of our two towns for many years now. We feel it's crucial that we continue to invest in this important resource. As it serves as a connection between the two towns' governments and our residents in the Hamilton Wyndham communities. However, more than that, as new technologies emerge and evolve. In residents look for better ways to stay connected to the community around them. HW Cam must be allowed to evolve and grow as well with those needs. As a result of the ongoing pandemic, we've seen our residents interacting more than ever with their local government and schools. You can see this in any of the attendance records on any of the Zooms from some of the hot topics lately. In order to satisfy the changing needs, demand and expectations of our residents and your subscribers. Verizon HW Cam must have access to new technologies. Cable equipment and improved facilities to provide access to public access to municipal meetings, school sports and other local programming. HW Cam needs to have the equipment and infrastructure to be able to provide greater expanded use. Of the PEG channels to meet those new and growing. Residents no longer can simply sit and passively watch our local select board, planning board, school committee and other meetings. They now take an active part in these meetings and have their voices heard. However. Infrastructure that makes this possible is being stressed in the local access channels like HW Cam need the resources to improve their connectivity. And broadcast capabilities. HW Cam needs the ability to join. Record and broadcast these meetings to ensure high quality, reliable public access for residents. We want to take this opportunity to make Verizon aware of these needs and our expectation that we will be able to provide those resources to HW Cam going forward. Through this cable license renewal. So that's just kind of a, I guess, a long statement. We see Jack's on now. Jack, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you. That was very good. I agree.
Selectman Farrell, John Clemensy has a quick question.
Yeah, John.
Our fearless leader, Bill Melville, would he not be present with us?
Yes, I'm here.
I was just asking his opinion next, John, unless you have a direct question for him.
Nope, I just wanted to know that he was present. Thank you.
Yeah, so Bill, do you have anything to add to that statement? Do you want to get into specifics at all or?
There's a few things. I mean, a lot of it I'd like to echo. I mean. You wouldn't think that through a pandemic, you'd learn like all these new ways to do things, but. It's actually brought about, you know, a new way of thinking about how we can provide the services that we traditionally would for the public. And in some ways, this isolation is brought on like this new virtual public square. I know now that I've had to incorporate some new technology into the. Into our playback rack. I've also like increased the government programming. I've seen a increase in viewership. And also an important thing is I think it's brought out about like a transparency. Within these meetings because people don't necessarily have to be there, but. You know, just like the like the governor, you know, deemed public access essential. It is essential. And in these kinds of. These tough times where people are stuck at home and they can't participate in person. This kind of technology, you know, you know. Basically, from its building blocks in the nineteen seventies to provide free public access to local government and events. I think it's it's basically just as important, if not more important now in these in these times. You know, like Joe said, or the statement said, like you read. Basically, there are some new technologies that are needed and with that. Comes funding and without the funding, you can't invest in in those kinds of things. You know, for example, like, yeah, we could. Do like a Facebook Live, but it's really not what the people expect. You need broadcast quality, you know, high, you know, high fidelity equipment and that. And that basically takes funds. It also takes resources, you know. Operational wise, where you need to, you know, to hire employees and do things like that. So I've found myself thinking outside the box. How can I do this differently? How can I provide? That access to people. When they can't get out and how can I keep the quality of that? You know, now we're in HD. And hopefully we can get our channel broadcast in HD, you know, through these licenses and stuff like that. But people now expect more. I know. When a meeting's done, people expect it to be on YouTube within, you know, minutes and and. You know, with that, and I'm happy about that, but it's also it does take resources that and that's due funding. So. I appreciate all the support that both towns and the schools have given me over the years and. Hope to continue to provide, you know, that kind of quality public access information to you.
Thank you, Bill. Go ahead, who was going to say something?
Can I can I speak from the standpoint of the Council on Aging? Would that be possible? Yeah, as far as my experience with COVID at this point and the pandemic, as far as communication goes. You know, we're I'm communicating more than than we ever did. With other councils on aging within the Senior Care Network and Bill's been. Great about, you know, hosting some of our content. I think when you're speaking of the sixteen over population that are homebound. You know, they. It's a very useful tool and in terms of them keeping up with with what's going on and it's of great interest, but I think also the costs associated. With getting to a place like. You know, K-Pan Studios, which I don't know if any of you have ever logged on or seen any of their stuff on YouTube, but. There's a lot of, you know, great content that. That I think we need to kind of venture into and that more and more people are starting to. To pay attention and care about quality and in order to achieve quality, you know, it's going to cost. So that's. That's all I really wanted to say. I think, you know, we've always appreciated the relationship with HW Cam. At the Wyndham COA and. So we would strongly support anything that would amplify and or improve services.
Jim, you piqued my interest. Tell me, tell me what type of things you've seen on K-Pan that you think would be beneficial? And not not available right now. It's Rosie Kennedy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, sixteen twenty-three Studios does, you know, has done series of interviews. With all kinds of different people from, you know, Senator Tar to. To others within their community about. Kind of what's going on from an environmental standpoint, from they they touch on all different kinds of subjects. And, you know, at some point. You know, it's a direction I think, you know, we should go in as well, just to inform people of. Of all the various things that that exist within the community that may not be as well known as they as they could be. If we if we were to use that technology. Like all the all the properties and walking paths and all the work that's being done to, you know, expose those. You know, it it just, it it's it's an interesting venue that. I can send you links to and you can see for yourself.
Thank you.
Can I can I speak to that for a minute?
Yeah, just one second, Brian. I just want to, we have a couple more of the Hamilton Selectmen on. I just wanted to make sure they check in. I see Jamie Knudsen. If you can just say you're here, Jamie. I think he's saying he's here, he's on mute. While Jamie's finding his mute button, I see Darcy's here. Darcy, just want to let people know you're here.
Yes, Darcy Dale here.
All right.
Hi, Darcy. Hi.
Jamie Knudsen here.
All right, thank you. And then also, folks, just for those of you that are kind of on but not on the video, or even if you are, if you want to speak. In the chat, just go ahead and type an X in. That way I know they're calling you next, that we can get a little bit of order going and I'll let. I'll let Brian go next and then if somebody else, oh, I see, I'm going to, Brian, if you don't mind, Michelle had asked first to speak. So I'll let Michelle speak first and then you can speak after and then we'll kind of go down if people have to add some stuff. So Michelle, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to come and speak about HW Cam. I am here. Sort of as a representative of the school committee. I wanted to let you know that HW Cam has been very essential for us in getting our meetings out during normal times, but also. During these times, taking our Zoom meetings and televising them live, which. Is required under the open meeting law to provide live access. And for those who aren't computer literate or have the internet, then still are able to meet. The needs of contacting them. But in addition to that, we also. Have the great privilege of having HW Cam cover many of the events at the schools. Sporting events as well as concerts, which for myself personally has been very important as my parents live away. And I've never really had the opportunity to see my kids at a concert or at a game, so I can send them the link. And they can go straight to it. And also during this time, my church is not met inside our building. But HW Cam has televised it on YouTube. So that has allowed us to stay connected with each other in a way that has been very important. And without that connection, it would be kind of a big hole in our lives. So it's Bill is always willing, ready and able to come and help us. And to provide the programming that the community really needs. I think we need to support that and. You know, I do agree with Jim that, you know, the six twenty-four studio is kind of amazing. They have. A lot going on there, but they also have a bigger population and, you know, just sort of a different vibe. But I'm wholeheartedly support what's going on at HW Cam. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Brian, you're you're up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, number one. Follow up with Jim as well and also introduce myself. I'm the president of the Board of HW Cam as long as, and Bob Gray is here as well, supporting. The board members. I just wanted to say that we're very excited that we have a new studio on Railroad Ave and. I think that, like many communities, to be in a separate facility. Is going to afford a lot more community involvement, hopefully. I mean, post pandemic, it would be nice to see. Someone locally take an interest in doing more. Talk shows and interviews and all of that process. I mean, generally in these communities, it's community driven. So if Cape. I know Cape Anne has a has a, in fact, the gentleman who runs Cape Anne lives here in Wyndham. I know that they have a pretty good support system up there and a nice. Community that wants to produce local programming and we had that for a while and it kind of ebbed and. We're hoping with the new studio that people will take more of an interest and they want to produce some talk shows and. Public interest shows and. You know, go around, show what the gardens are like and what the local trail. I found out all of all these local trails that. I didn't even know I had right on my own street during the pandemic. So we'd love to see more locally produced things. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And Mary Beth, I think you threw your X in the ring there. Did you want to add?
I want to, hi, Mary Beth Lawton, Council on Aging Director for the town of Hamilton. I want to echo what everyone is saying and. Give Bill Melville and the board a great big shout out because. I mean, prior to this, they had always been there. Whenever you called them and you needed them to do anything. They were Johnny on the spot. But right now with what we're going through, they've become a lifeline for many of our seniors right now. One of the frustrating things that we're dealing with is that. Many of you might have heard, you know, Jim and myself talk in the past about how difficult it is. To get technology into the hands of seniors. Sometimes it's because they can't afford it and sometimes it's because. They don't have the wherewithal to be able to use a piece of technology such as a smartphone or a tablet. And thirdly, economically, they might not be able to afford a Zoom account. We know the free ones just kind of tail off after a certain amount of time. They shut off, you have to log back in. I don't think a lot of our seniors have that capability and right now, working with Bill to put programming out there. One of the things that we just worked on is a company that is a. Medical marijuana dispensary and they're dealing with the issue of how we help seniors. Who are socially isolated, who are going through pain, who are having difficult times. This is the this content is free and they reached out to me and. Bill was kind enough to provide me with the demographics that the. Dispensary company was looking for in order to get the information out there. A lot of this is what we're trying to do right now and get it up and get it out and. My frustration has been that a lot of the people that I reach out to are looking to be paid for doing a, you know, a class or a film for me and. I just don't have the funds to be able to do that, so I'm searching for other type of content that we can put out there. But honestly, the seniors, this is the 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 Hamilton Wyndham Cable Station is the single one place that they turn to all the time to. To try to find things out. They don't typically go to the Facebook page, our Facebook page. They typically don't go to the town website. They go to that bulletin board. That's right on the Hamilton Wyndham site and they. They get updated and they get notified and they're told what's going on and they take that as gospel and when it's wrong. Somebody gets a phone call about that because somebody's paying attention. So. I want to thank Bill and his staff and the board for everything that they've done. And I hope to continue this partnership for as many years as I have the privilege of working for the seniors in Hamilton.
Thank you, Mary Beth. If anybody else wishes to. Add to the conversation, they're more than welcome to.
Sean, this is John Clemensy.
Hi, John.
Hi, I'm fascinated listening to everybody's commentary. I think this is quite an enlightening. Situation because one of the most important things that I've. Often thought about and been frustrated with is communication with. The residents of our of our communities. And the newspaper is technologically very easy and simple. But I've found that it doesn't really have the support from the newspaper. Personnel themselves. Television is a one-way street. And this seems to be able to communicate both ways if properly allowed. But the technology part of it is much more complicated and a bit challenging as we we. Have all seen, I'm sure, and I'm not the first one to say. I'm technologically challenged and I'm learning my way up this this staff pretty quick. But I think this has got a lot of potential for our future abilities to communicate in a more meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'll just kind of add a little bit. I think the HD programming is important. Most of the kind of standard fare that people are viewing now is an HD format. You know, if we had HD channels, it would make a huge difference for us. We wouldn't be kind of down in the thirty-something channels like we are now. We could be up and. Make it more accessible for everybody. But with that, you know, we have, we need equipment. We need that support for the programming. You know, as people have kind of said before, I don't want to reiterate too much, but you know, it's all about connections. We're. Trying to connect during this pandemic and I think things are going to go back to. A new normal, as everyone kind of keeps saying, but I think this platform. With these video meetings and then these hybrid meetings will probably eventually start having with in-person and video meetings. They're going to need that support to keep up this kind of pace that we're going at now with all this data and content. And being able to stream these meetings, being able to record these meetings, being able to upload these meetings. All takes kind of time and money and we're hoping to get help with that, you know, and we're hoping to serve. I heard a lot of comments about the senior population really relying on it for the billboard and when things are being. Put on in town and stuff like that, but I think it serves the whole population, you know, not just government access, not just Hamilton Wyndham School access. You know, we're trying to hit all our bases here in town and all our demographics and we really need that support from Verizon to help us accomplish that.
Sean, I I would agree. It's it's Rosie. I'd just like to say a little bit about that as well. My neighbors are constantly saying to me that it's really hard for them to keep up on. Current happenings in Hamilton and. Sometimes you just rack your brains trying to figure out a different a different way to reach people, but if we had a more. A more complete HW Cam programming. Availability, I I think that would be another venue where people could turn to to find out about some informational. Information about what's going on in town and it also because there would be a real live person giving that information. I think it would be. A nice sort of human connection. I mean, obviously, not expecting to do a back and forth, but for. Somebody in town to be able to give information face to face, I think, would be very beneficial to disseminating important information to people.
And I think it's also important just for the kind of. Community relationships and and. You know, I think of like, you know, the. Like, I'm trying to think of a newscast or something, kind of the human interest stories, you know, a lot of these. Cam access channels do a lot of kind of local highlights, you know, here's the. Here's the kid that won this. Here's a local business pin from the Rotary and all these different things that build community and that's what. That's what we depend on these cable access things to do is build this community and support it.
Right, you know, and just the day-to-day things, what's going on with X issue in town? Nobody seems to be able to find out and. And honestly, I don't think Facebook is the best place to find out because it's more opinion sometimes than than it is actual fact. And so. If we were able to provide more accurate updates to people, I think that certainly would build a sense of community. Oh, so that's what's going on. I I think that would be really helpful and beneficial to the town.
Right, and I think just to piggyback one more time on that, when you're talking about the kind of. Society we live in now is is kind of a, it's up to date all the time. You're flooded with all this information and. If our cable access channel isn't kind of giving us that up-to-date information and having supporting needs to do that. You know, then it kind of falls off and we don't want that to happen. So.
Yeah.
Verizon for that support.
Right, agreed.
Is there anybody else that wants to add anything?
Gary Cheeseman on here. I'd just like to say that as I came on the board recently, I found that the two big challenges was. You know, nobody used telephone landlines really anymore and it's very difficult to get printed. You know, we have the Salem News, but the Chronicle is, I'm sure the readership has gone down considerably, subscription. So I see the HW Cam. As one solution for both boards and all the committees in town to really make their decisions and information available to the public at large. I'd like to see HW Cam get the HD and let's go forward with the better technology.
Thank you, Gary. If nobody else wants to add to it, I'll ask Bill August, what's kind of next step? Close the hearing and and then we. We hear back from Verizon. I don't know if they're on the line now or not. I don't see.
I'm here.
Oh, hi.
Hi. The next, a couple of next steps, and Bill Solomon is here also, Council Two Wyndham. Hi, everybody. Great hearing. We. Ultimately, we'll be requesting a draft license document. From Verizon, which is really where the rubber meets the road. We want to see it codified. We usually wait till. After the hearing to ask for that document because now with this hearing having been held, we can. Convey to Verizon what we heard at the hearing that there's such these growing needs. Of technology and the operating support. So. Based on this hearing, we'll be in a position to request a draft license and then start the informal negotiation. Of the actual renewal license document. In between the hearing. And the. Conclusion of the negotiations, it's also common to. Generate some documents outlining these needs with more specificity. And Bill Solomon and I have both been. Speaking with the with Joe and Anthony. About working with Bill Melville to generate those documents, which go from the general to the more detailed, an actual itemization of equipment needs. So I know Bill is working on an itemized capital budget and an itemized operating budget. So I always say like the three most important things are budgets, budgets and budgets because. Those demonstrate needs. If there's one word in the Cable Act that's central, it's needs. It talks about ascertaining needs. So we'll. Bill is making progress, great progress on the budgets and it should also include some talking points. To use in negotiations. The you get the most bang for your buck from those documents. If they're reduced to some form of findings that can be endorsed or. Adopted by the Boards of Selectmen is they are the issuing authorities. And like the attorneys and cable. And administrators and managers always have more. Force behind the negotiations where we tell Verizon that we have these documents and in some form or another, we. Finalize that, have them. In some form, they should they will be should be endorsed or adopted by the Selectmen. So we're speaking for the Selectmen. Because you've got the Selectmen are the licensing authorities. Bill Solomon is my colleague in in these activities for many years. Bill, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just that, you know, I I think it would be helpful to. To see if we could finalize a license in. In 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 early in in early December. That's materially before the expirations, but December is a good time of the year to finalize an agreement. It it not only are people in a good mood before it turns to January and the winter gets long, but. When the when the page turns on a year. The larger corporation, the folks at the headquarters start thinking of what they want to, how they want to handle the next year. And I think it's two thousand twenty would be a great time to see if we could. Push in a in a in a in a rational conversational way Verizon to complete the financial deal. And the license terms in a by December this year. That it may not happen, but that would be my, that would be my goal for those two reasons.
All right, that's that's perfect. I was just going to ask you about timelines so that.
We we should, without getting into the weeds of it, we should note. I think while everyone is here, that the Federal Cable Act that has the renewal statute. Has two completely different renewal procedures. One is called informal renewal and one is called formal. One is called informal renewal and one is called formal. And they're both pursued by different municipalities, probably nineteen out of twenty do the informal renewal, which is to, you know, the cable access, we can schedule negotiation sessions with the incumbent at any time and have these informal negotiations meetings. They're public meetings if there's a quorum of a government body present. And we negotiate and we usually reach an agreement with a company like Verizon that tends to be reasonable. But just, there is also a formal renewal process under the Cable Act where if you're having difficulties with the company, you can issue an RFP to that company. And that's the bigger, that's kind of a more of a production and you have to generate separate from the license, a whole RFP. I just want to flag that because if anyone has ever been aware of that distinction between informal and formal renewal or has questions about wanting to use the formal process, I just want to mention it. I don't, I don't see anticipated need for it, but I wanted to flag it because it's out there. Bill Solomon, any comment?
Yeah, no, I did that. The idea of trying to get this done by December would be based on a informal negotiation coming to a financial deal and the license terms with Verizon. I think that's, that's, that's certainly doable. If, if that's not doable, then the license would require a little more of the potentially the formal approach or more discussions we'd be in the next year. But I think the goal is, and I think it's a realistic goal, but it depends on both sides of trying, if we can, to get it done in December for the reasons I said. But Bill's exactly right. If, if it doesn't informally come to that agreement, then we'd be looking at taking some further steps and that would certainly take us into the next year.
Right. I don't think it's probably, I think it's improbable that we need recourse to that. I just mentioned it out of a spirit of due diligence because it is in the statute. So I just wanted to note it that there are different approaches to renewal. Some towns, very few, will actually write up a whole formal RFP to issue to the company rather than just give a couple of pages of findings and budgets.
Yeah, I don't think we have in the past. I think we've always gone in, on informal route with it. I don't think we've ever done an agreement.
One, the final thought is that, you know, that the, the license legal terms are as important here as the financial terms in the world we're living in with a transitioning of some of the industry. With Verizon looking, you know, to have one foot out the door, but yet one foot in the door. So we, we're going to make sure that we protect you to the greatest extent possible. And if there's any issues that, that we feel we're not happy with, we'll come back to the board and discuss that and makes, and, and maybe have the board weigh in. But the idea of getting it done will be based on trying to get it done on reasonable license terms that are consistent with other licenses in 2019, in 2020.
One last thing, I think that's changed a lot in Verizon cable licensing. It's like so different and, and this is a good time to just mention it. So Verizon refuses to sign a license longer than five years. The, the last go around, they were doing ten-year licenses and even fifteen-year initial licenses. Under the state law, the maximum is ten for a renewal license. But the first time around, we're, this time around, towns are seeing Verizon sending in their, their proposed licenses with a five-year maximum. And I can tell you, we've asked them on the record, you know, at public hearings, are you just saying you won't do more than five or have, have you done any more than five anywhere in the last three, four years? And it's, it's absolutely refused. So we will be seeing, and as Bill said, they're in cable and they're out of cable. And that's part of their being sort of in and out there in the, in the wireless trend. And so that's a bit different than what we had in the past. And it's a shame, it's, it's so annoying to have to do it on a five-year basis when you want to try to lock up this thing. We'll still ask for the longer term, but Bill, as your take on that, any different or?
Just that in, in consideration for a shorter-term license, there are other things that we would need and want and will, will attempt to balance out a shorter-term license with those compensating factors that take into consideration the benefit of a shorter license from their perspective. So we're not, if we, with, if we have a shorter license, we're going to, we're going to get some advantages that, that try to balance that out. That, you know, a, a deal takes two parties and it takes, not only Verizon, it takes the towns.
Right. They usually acknowledge they will pay more per, they will commit to more equipment funding on a per-subscriber basis than Comcast in consideration of their not being able to do a license as long as Comcast. That was like the capital premium. So there will be some financial return for that.
We got it done in 2020, then I think that, that the term will work for the.
All right. I'm not holding my breath for the finishing it by the end, but we'll try.
All right. Does anybody else have anything they want to add? And if they don't, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to.
Yes, John, John Clemensy, I've just got to add of a wrap up a couple of comments. Mr. August, what have the two towns done in the past? Formal or informal agreements?
Informal got us to the ed zone.
Okay. And then?
I mean, they're formal agreements, but informal process.
Right.
Oh, I see. So informal eventually turns into formal?
Oh, yeah. The, the license at the end of an informal is the same as a license at the end of a formal. If not better, because sometimes once you go formal, they bring in like five or 10 people to work on the RFP and then they're looking over the shoulders of the negotiators. And then the informal, they, they can cut to the chase more and it's much more cost-effective.
Okay. Secondly, I, I personally would reveal, rely heavily on Bill Melville for what it is that we would be looking for. So I would want to know what Bill is, is looking for, for through this process. And if we're missing something, please, Bill, make sure that it's on the table.
On that note, I just want to give a note of thanks. Having done this in the last prior renewal with Bill Melville, the technical detail that he put into the ascertainment reports last time around was just, just fantastic. So.
Yeah, he's been.
We will be looking for his documents and information very much.
Okay, that's, that's my point is he's been with us a long time. He has been fabulous to work with and a real innovator.
He gave us some of the most expert ascertainment reports we've, they're great, they're great.
Okay, that's my, that's my biggest concern. So what, if there's anything else beyond that that you need from us, the towns, let us know what that is. But you're the leaders.
Sorry, go ahead, Brian.
This is Jack, Board of Selectmen. I, I think a great meeting and we've learned a lot. And I move that we adjourn, the Wentzum Board of Selectmen, we adjourn this meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second your motion, Jack.
I would make one procedural point to adjourn the hearing, but just to be clear to the public, we can keep the record of the ascertainment open so that outside of the hearing, there is still an ongoing ascertainment process where we can accept documents and information from all interested persons.
Something noted in the minutes. Thank you.
And just to add to that, if, if I could, that, and reserve the right to have an additional hearing or hearings if, if determined by the boards.
Indeed, indeed.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second on the Board of?
My last procedural note, I'm entering the newspaper, the newspaper notice is going into this hearing record. There's a little reg that says, so I always, okay.
All right, Clemensy, second your motion, Jack.
And hey, Jack, if I can interrupt for a second, I know Brian Dozier wanted to say one thing. So if he wants to say it still, I'll let him have the floor for just a second. Please.
I appreciate it. I'll be quick. I am a Verizon user is, you know, and I, I think that our two towns have really had the benefit of both services here, you know, the both competing services and couldn't get through the pandemic without both the television and the internet services. But Bill, I just had, I don't, I don't want to throw the, the closing of the meeting off. But I mean, this process has been pretty standard, the, the informal process. Most of these towns have gone through and it's just been a pretty smooth sailing for the most part. It's a question for you, Bill August.
I would say no, just for what it's worth. It, it's not, it's, it's only smooth sailing. If, if, if the company is, is, understands that the town is going to require that it be treated fairly, that, that, you know, the town is, both towns and the committee and the committee and Bill Melville are committed. And your attorneys, you know, guide you through the, the, the traps and pitfalls of modern licensing. So I'd say it's harder, it's more difficult than ever from a legal perspective, the provisions of the license. And the, the, the funding, I think that the, the differences are smaller than they had been 10 years ago, but they're getting, they're becoming more challenging because of the changing world. So I think the answer is, it, it, as, as Bill August well says, these are multi-billion dollar companies with lots of financial people and lawyers and others, and they're well represented. And we make sure it's a level playing field. And what helps us is your ability to speak to the public and to be heard and to demand you're treated fairly. And if you're not, that will be heard by the public, it'll be in the paper, it'll be in the internet, it'll go across the state, it'll go across the world. These companies that care about their, their corporate reputation. And therefore they both, even Verizon, to its credit, takes the Cable Act seriously, that they sit down and negotiate. So I'm optimistic that we can get a good license, but it's actually more difficult than ever to get that sort of license because of the uncertainties of the world going forward.
One important illustration.
I'm very, I'm very pleased. We have a great team here. I've already moved and seconded.
Yep.
On the behalf of the Wentzum, I, I don't want to talk about this for another 20 minutes.
Okay, great.
Please. All in favor of adjourning the meeting on the part of the Wentzum Board of Selectmen? I'd already got a first and a second. Gary?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you. You so. Hamilton BOS, if anybody else still wants to add something, you're more than welcome to. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Rosemary seconded, roll call vote. Sean Farrell, aye. Rosie?
Right. Rosie Kennedy, aye.
Darcy?
Darcy Dale, aye.
Jamie?
Jamie Knutson, aye.
All right, the Hamilton BOS is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.